In the special meeting of the Ocam bonus selection Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty five at one P M. First up is Sarah Hunter, treasure collector. Yes, first of all, Sarah, we're looking for an update on. Where you stand with everything.
Um, so as of right now, we were able to do the entries for twenty twenty five. So the entries for all the tax collection. And departmental turnovers have been entered into Vadar. We were able to um send out refunds and abatement or refunds recently. Uh, we have a few that we still have to review um to verify that are over payments, but that should bring us up to date on those as well. Um, all of the bills have been sent out and they're up to date. The next round will be demands. Um, before I do that, I'm considering sending out just a reminder letters, which is kind of a courtesy. Which typically doesn't happen. It's a little bit extra cost to the town, very, very minimal, but um because of the turnover system and the um. Short staffing in the office, I think it's a good P R thing to do. It's better for the taxpayers who just maybe not know that they owe anything. Um, that's just one option to to kind of the flow in the office be better. Um, that would bring you guys up to the point where then we can start going back on the cycle of billing, demands, warrants and. Move forward like we normally would in the process. Um, now that we have entered all the information for twenty five, we started moving forward with twenty six. We've been able to maintain that. Um, every week we come in, um, that was the last couple of weeks uh was when we finalized that. So now. Every time I come in once a week, we're able to post any payments that have come in, upload from Unibank, um, Unipay online. Uh, make transfers that need to be done. And so the data stuff, the day to day has been able to happen now going forward. So there's no more behind postings. Um, and billing, so twenty six looks like we're moving in the right direction. Um. Now, that being said, we now have to start looking at closing the F Y twenty five books. Um. Because of the. Transactions we had to process that were from prior months, um, it's going to take a little bit of time. Um, I I know accounting would like it before the thirty first. Uh, I don't see that happening um for on our side. Uh, I had. Spoken to the accounting firm back in September and had mentioned that I think October thirty first would be the day. That we would be able to have cash done and uploaded to Gateway. They then had their portion that they have to do. And obviously, we're going to try and move and get that date pushed forward. Uh, but I can't. I can't project if we're going to see anything huge with what we've been doing again, because it wasn't. Straightforward when we were entering, we were entering things prior, you know, in in July, we're entering things from February on.
So is that gonna uh postpone a little bit by how much time in setting the tax rate?
So again, I I had set upfront that it, you know, October thirty first is probably my deadline. I know that they then have a lot of work to do on their side for accounting. Um, hopefully, I'll be able to provide some things that they can move forward with accounting and start cleaning up some of the stuff or or posting the things they want to. Uh, I can't speak on how much longer that'll add to their work, but. We really are going to, you know, obviously, things had paused because of the town meeting, so we couldn't really move forward faster. Um, because we did have to do the data day stuff. Unfortunately, we have to make sure that. M L Cs by law have to get out, which means you have to make sure real estate is posted on time, things like that. Uh. But now we're able to go a little bit faster and and put things into gear, but a week to be able to do that is is not attainable. So unfortunately.
Okay. And did you see the email from the accountant this morning?
Yeah, the sixteenth, and that's why I said I I can't, we we just got this yet last night, um, you know, to be able to do the the back stuff. Um, and a week is just not, just not enough time for us to be able to do what we need to do. But we, again, we're not, we're going to try. And if we can reach that goal, that would be ultimately what we really, really want to do. Um. But I don't want to have false hopes for you guys that it's going to be done.
What is uh, your bill did uh, the accountant? Give a timeline for when they wanted to. Have it. Uh, be able to wrap up there and. I realize that they're not going to match up at the moment.
Yeah, well, clearly, obviously, everybody would want it done like yesterday, right? Um, but all I know is that the accountant, obviously, based on the email, was hoping for the sixteenth. And then also, she said that once it's closed on your end, it takes her, like you just stated, about. Three, four weeks dependent on for her to close. So, you know, if we're looking, let's say, November first or October thirty first, that's at least.
So we're theoretically looking at December first, beginning of the December, whatever.
And that's why, like I said, I are are now that we're the day to day, um, being able to process that. And we and because taxes are coming November first, we want to hit this, we doing both is very hard, getting all the taxes and and trying to do the close out. So ideally, we would like to get it be done before the sixteenth. Um, again, accounting has a lot to do, and I don't want to deter her from all her work she has to do. And as well as the assessors. So that is our number one goal, but we also have to collect the taxes, right?
We have to set the tax rate in a little within some time in December, right? For February first, because we'd have to mail them. Basically, January first.
Yeah, you have to before uh the, so December third.
The end last week of December, so.
Yeah, she, the email from the accountant stated that the assessors have submitted all their files for the recap. Okay, so that's.
Yeah, yeah. So you're really waiting on us genuinely. It's um, you know, and we we take that very seriously because accounting has a lot to do.
You you're in the meeting with D O R. What was their concern?
Um, the timeframe.
Timeframe.
Yeah, just cut it really close, granted, considering the circumstances as all, not on one particular party, just as a the town in itself. That was their biggest um concern, just the the time period. Which, you know, I think that's everybody's concern. Yeah.
So we need to set a tax rate by December second or by December thirty first?
I actually am not sure exactly what the deadline, if there is a deadline.
I think the bills have to go out, because if they do February first.
They they have to be out before by the thirty first, exactly, because they have to be. Yeah, you have to have thirty days, so.
I think it's thirty days in hand.
So for.
Taxpayer.
Well, as long as it's stamped by the post office. So even if you bring it like the thirty first, if that's a, you know, weekday or whatever, yeah.
And the other reason that I really, if if we can hit it sooner, it does affect us as well, because. If we do not get the bills out by January first. We cannot collect interest and and the bills aren't actually due until May first, which will affect your cash flow.
Yeah.
So again, we are pushing, we want to move forward as fast as we can, because ultimately, it does come to us as well. Any. Any slowing down now will slow us trying to get the bills out, which will then cause cash flow issues. Um, so that deadline is is huge across the board.
Right.
To get it done.
And I know that the assessors come before the board with the hearing, you know, so we got to keep in mind the, you know, those dates and post it. So it's. Trickling effect, for sure.
Yes.
Any other? Fines of concern through. Your whole look at everything?
Um, no, I just, again, there's it's more about.
Trust to everything.
So the trust I have not gotten a chance to dive into because it was, again, it went to, we need to get the payments posted. That was. The number one focus to get the payments posted. The second was to get the M L Cs, which by law, we have twenty business days to to get out. Um, which we cannot do until we post all the payments, because otherwise, four M L Cs go out. Uh, we had to coordinate with escrow accounts, the escrow companies, um, because they were also pulling files. That were causing some issues, but we've been since then been able to work with them, just sent overnighted a file to the escrow company. So anybody who was affected would have. Um, and again, I was in communication with them to let them know of any issues. So that's been addressed and sent back to them. Um.
The other big issue coming up is the uh. Fire truck.
Yes.
That's due in November.
So, yeah, so I sent out.
Sooner than later.
I've I've sent out two emails, because I need some directive on that. Um, it looks like they were trying to get some full time. Uh, I mean, a full time permanent borrowing, but last year we tried to, and according to what I could read from the emails, that. The town didn't, nobody bid, no banks bid on a permanent one.
So the first year, we tried long term borrowing.
Okay.
Um, our former treasure collector put it out, there was no bidding on that one. That's when it went to the ban.
Yeah.
Right, one term. And then last year, being the second year, we just, she, the collector at the time, again, just did.
Okay.
The short term borrowing, I at this second year, there was no uh, no try.
No try on that.
As far as I know, for the long term borrowing.
So if we're going to try, which again, this is ultimately whatever the town has been working towards in the finance committee, we can try for the permanent borrowing. I just suggest we get that done now, because if we don't get the permanent borrowing, we will need to do a short term borrowing, and that does not give us a lot of room to get.
And when we had our joint meeting with finance, we discussed it and we were all, I believe, pretty adamant that. Needed not to do that.
Okay.
Um, and do, well, I don't think we set. A term of ten, we talked ten years, but whatever that comes out to, or I mean, if it's less for the same money we're spending now.
Um, realistically, do you think that there's enough time? From now to when it's due, which is right after Thanksgiving, November twenty something, to possibly do a long term?
Yes, yeah, we we should be, I, we shouldn't have an issue as long as it's been what they call a green light letter issued, which if you got the ban, most likely. All that documentation has already been provided by bond count to bond council. Um, so I would recommend we go out to bid sooner for a permanent borrowing. Once you guys give me, I can give you the. Estimates of what the cost is. I'm not sure, I haven't seen that come through, um, what the five, ten, what you guys had discussed. So if you guys could send me a directive on what you're looking for for quotes of what the estimated would be for a long term borrowing um schedule.
Yeah, I thi- I think with the Fed, we've only had a quarter point drop. So I don't know if it's going to affect it at all.
Right.
We're what at four point four seven, something like that.
What our current one?
Yeah.
Yeah, four point eight four.
Eighty four, okay. But I'm assuming we're going to be in the same range.
Roughly.
Give or take.
Give or take a half a point, yeah.
Couple of points.
And if I made.
Behind the decimal.
When I did the workshop with um D L S with Jared Curtis, he and Claire, Claire and I did this. Um, they provided us a name that I have in my office of um someone to contact where borrowing can be under the state. If you are not like bond rated or anything like that, I don't know if that's anything that is worth sharing to you or would be beneficial for.
You can share it, absolutely. Um, and see, I wanted to see what their their thought were about the conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
Can circle back to see, uh, there's again, different types of borrowings you can do, you can.
Right.
So I would typically work with the bond council, uh, the financial advisor, uh, what they've done in the past, what the current trend is of rates and what kind of. Um, banks are borrowing on these and whether or not, like you said, we want to do. Within the state, if we want to go out to private bidders, um, if we want to do the ban, wha- whatever route we want to.
I guess it's worth looking into, right?
Yes.
It was just an email name that which I can share with you.
Have have you done that with other communities through the state?
Yes, we've done the State House program too as well, so.
And. Is that a little higher, a little lower versus going out for basically quotes?
It depends on like the financials. It's it's typically, I want to say it's sometimes higher, but it depends on what the trend is. So I would refer to my financial advisor to see how things are going right now. And what the trend is for um the patterns.
So that's.
Which I can shoot them today if.
So really, the only decision we would have on our end is what we're looking for for a term. Which basically boils down to a yearly payment.
Which I can ask them to provide um a five, ten, a ten year plan, so that way you can see the difference um of what you would like. And we don't know what, and they can also tell us what, again, the trend is of what banks are bidding on it.
Yeah.
Um, if they're not bidding five years, then we might want to do the ten years. So we'll kind of get a trend from them to see what's been going on in the market.
How far do you want her to look for quotes, five, ten, fifteen, or just five and ten?
I wouldn't go over ten.
Okay.
Because then now we're losing money on the other end.
I thought.
But we're also going to have to look at it as. Well, we get two years into it already, so we originally said ten years on this truck.
Yeah, that's already done.
I would stay at ten. Yeah. The only other wild card is. What we may end up doing for override. Which. It it's it's kind of like this, but. If this payment is lower over more time, would affect. Offset the override. How high that would go. Yeah. Or do we just clean this up and get rid of it? Um. And stay within what we're budgeted now. Probably not to exceed what we're spending now. See how we can clean up seven hundred thousand dollars. No, we can't. No, I'm just saying, we we don't, if we stretch it out for a low lower payment. To reduce an override by a little bit. Tax rate. Yeah, yeah, we're we're probably better off. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Staying with. What we've kind of been paying every, you know, the last two years. Yeah, I see what you mean. Give or take. Yeah. Couple hundred dollars or fifty dollars or whatever, the difference was it. Yeah. Get it off the books in eight years. You know, if it's a difference between eight and ten years of. You know, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars, well, then maybe it's better to go with ten. Right. But.
So you were five, eight and ten years, does that sound up?
Yeah.
Man, okay, I'll get I'll get three different ones. I'll send an email out today, so we can forward that to you guys, so you can look at it, the finance committee. Um, to review what the best avenue for the town is right now.
Me finance, Claire did look at. Paying down on it through capital, but I I think we were all at the end of that meeting, we're like. It doesn't really buy us unless you could pay the whole thing at once, which we couldn't do. Yeah, it's a dead exclusion. It's not like you bought a car and you're paying down on it.
Yeah, and I don't know what your take is, but I know the accountant and both Jared from D L S recommended against that. You know, it doesn't change.
No.
The taxpayers' interest. He's like, once it's done, let that be. I completely understand her perspective. Doing it more on a political side, trying to show the town residents, we're trying to lower this debt in case we're, the town is trying to go for an override, but it doesn't change anything.
Yeah.
Right.
So. Other than that, there's the, just getting the office to be a well functioning office, um. Getting that office run to to the point where the things, all the items are cleaned up, ultimately helps in the everyday activities. Um. That is. That's where a lot of times we struggle or town struggles is trying to get these items cleaned up. If you don't do it, eventually, you will have to do it in some form. Usually by fire, right? So somebody calls, I need this, you have to do it, the world stops, you have to do those types of things. So it's either you look at that, do you want the office to be well functioning and smooth, and you know what your fixed cost is going to be down the line? Or do you keep trying to move forward? In the direction of we're doing it and we can do it, but you'd never know when something is going to come up and something else doesn't get done, because you are unable to do. The day to day that is expected, but you also have obligations to do things, tax title, um, you know, research and any. As you can see it going down the line of the other options, um, that was asked of. Things that need to be done in the office that we've seen do need to be looked at and addressed as. Um. And one of them is reconciliation, you know, that's, that gets put to the wayside. Uh, unfortunately, it is probably the biggest piece that needs to be and should be done in the office, cash reconciliation. Unfortunately, the town can function without that until this time of year. So most community, not most, some communities. Um, as the treasurer, they're they're stuck with options, right? Once you do and you can survive in that without doing the cash, and ultimately, you will have to do it. But again, the struggles happen this time of year when it needs to get done and it's a mad rush. One of the questions in here was talking about stabilization, and let me know if you want to look back or have any questions about the different items. Um, one of the questions about stabilization and moving it out of stabilization, how that impact is going to be. And that was. Something that I had thought as well, because you don't want to have a loss in when you're pulling funds. So typically, what I'd like to see is. We to contact Bartholomew where the trust fund money is, and they. Know that we're going to be having to move some money out of the trust at some point, the stabilization account. Uh, they have certain types of investments going for the town. And they can plan, and so there won't be a loss on the town's part of when the funds are removed. So. We can work with them to find out when those funds are going to be available. Um, and then once they are, I would suggest we pull them out, but then put them immediately into what we call M M D T bank. Uh, which is a money market account, but it's still earning, I want to.
You have an account?
Yeah, we do. And I've been trying to keep everything in there because it has a really high interest rate. I think it's four point two five, four point five right now. So. Um, I've been, I've been really not trying to touch that money, because that's where um we're getting the best interest rate. So when the. Follow you stabilization, once we kind of come up with a plan of what things are going to come down to, I would then at that point pull. So that there's no loss, move it right into M M D T, and as the funds are needed, we would then slowly take the minimal out to cover. Um, any of the expenses for the town.
So just for clarification, we we basically have two banks of money. We have general stabilization, capital stabilization, which is basically the town's savings account.
Correct.
And when I refer to the trust, I'm thinking the Alvin Fund, the Gromby Fund for the library, et cetera, et cetera. Those are the ones you're talking about right now.
Those, no, I'm talking about the stabilization ones, the stabilization account still has is in with Bartholomew, I believe. And so those funds. Are usually in like treasury bonds, things like that, that are still liquid, but you know, almost like a C D kind of, they they invest them. Um, a lot of times tiered, so as you need money, you can pull them. Um, but I found that working with them is they just need to know a little bit in advance, so wherever they have their money, that they. We won't take a loss when we pull it, you know, they they'll pull based off of when they have and and kind of I can work with them on what the schedule, best schedule would be. Um, and how much that would be at each time.
So we really have two separate between the.
The trust, which is kind of.
The trust that were left to the town.
Yes.
Those are in this.
They're still with Bartholomew, they're not expendable, yeah.
They're not with this group of money.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So that would be my recommendation to um try not to have a large impact on the stabilization fund, loss of interest for that.
And that interest rolls over into the stabilization.
So the, when, yes, so the interest that's there now is in stabilization, and then once it's withdrawn from stabilization. That interest goes to the general fund, doesn't go into the stabilization account anymore.
But there's no automatic. Interest withdrawal into the general fund.
No.
It would just keep rolling all over if we didn't touch it.
Yes.
Okay. Just for clarification. You would have to have an article on a meeting to move that money?
If you, if, right, and and that's if not the interest, so um, the article. To take from stabilization to the town, because there was a question on how, um, one of the questions was how is the stabilization going to be impacted? By moving it at the special town meeting. So right now, the stabilization can stay, it can stay in that account um for a short period. Um, and that interest is earned in stabilization. And then when we move the money out of stabilization, per the article that's already happened. That money will then go into a general fund account, and that will, the general fund will generate interest. Mm hmm. You won't get it in the stabilization account, right?
So the money that's generated in interest in stabilization stays in stabilization.
Yes, yes.
Doesn't automatically, like he said, doesn't automatically go into general fund.
Correct.
So it stays.
It stays there, yes.
All right, so if we earn fifty thousand in interest and we pulled twenty out, we're ahead of the game.
Yes.
So theoretically, what you're saying is if we earned fifty thousand a year, just in interest, we could pull part of the interest. Into the general to fund ongoing, because it's earned income, basically.
Right, you still have to go, you still have to go town meeting though.
Oh, no.
Okay, yes, yes, just to be careful, you can't pull it, yeah.
Can't just do it.
But the offset too, again, going back to M M D T, the rates are very, you know, very good, in my opinion, so it's not. Um, the shift over that will go into the general fund, the general fund will still also um earn some interest. For the funds that you pulled from special town meeting.
So theoretically, if we had a hundred million dollars in the bank, we could probably fund the budget and probably have a very, very low tax rate.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. No.
Moving on, gentlemen.
Just for a happy thought.
Happy thoughts.
Okay, I didn't realize there was any of them around. Questions? Want any more questions? I do. I I really wish we'd had her at the meeting. I think that would have answered a lot of questions. You answered my questions with what you just said. I did have another one, I can't think what the hell it is now. Good, Mike, I'll I'll think of it. Um. I I guess it's more into your proposal. If you'd like to go through that a little bit. And then I'll ask you questions instead of.
Yes.
When you get, you know, instead of preempting it.
So my, the, it was the initial, um. I gave you the cost of.
Right.
Basically, what this section in the middle was, um, well, really, all of the things that we kind of. You asked at the same time was what the regular duties are, right? So the regular duties, it's kind of separating them out by, you know. Six hours or so, six to eight hours, was because if we're able to do all those items, as I mentioned, if we can do those items. That would ultimately be how the office for our company would be able to sustain six to eight hours. Um. As you pull through, pull out items, which again, I, nothing's written in stone. I really want what's best for the community, whatever you guys want. I'm just guiding you to what is ideal. This is, this is the ideal situation. Um.
With that said, let me go through the, kind of the general questions I have that, um. So with this, you would continue processing payroll?
Yes.
Okay, and then. The M I I A health insurance invoices, right?
Yes.
That would be part of it.
Yes.
Um, the nine months at thirty six thousand. Is that a flat rate?
Yes.
And that would be for nine months, four thousand a month.
Yes. And that would include all day to day activity, which is the payroll, the camera work, anything moving forward, anything um.
But not the remainder of the cleanup.
Correct.
Okay. Um. A hundred and fifty an hour. Is that a flat rate? For just you, or if there's two people, that's three hundred?
It is for three, it's multiple, whoever's working, and uh my rate's actually, my rate's a little bit higher. Um, my staff rate is at a little bit lower.
Okay, well, let me rephrase it then. Is the hundred and fifty, which comes to what? Seventy nine in in this?
Uh huh.
Or seventy seven?
Uh, thirty, no, it was thirty six. So I think what, Mike, if I may clear up, maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, in the original. Quote, it says day to day, a hundred and fifty an hour.
Yes.
Six to eight hours a week for nine months, thirty six thousand.
Yes.
So I think Mike is saying, if if it's the flat rate, there's no hourly rate?
Yes, correct, so.
So that was.
Yes, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the cleanup side of it.
No, the cleanup side is still like the consultant side.
Too, I think.
Yeah.
And that's the.
Okay, so I think that's.
Yes, and the hundred and fifty was, um, and that's why there's the range, the six to eight. So I'm going to be doing some of the day to day stuff. I have other staff doing the day to day stuff. But the range is you're going to get this work, the day to day stuff. No matter if it's a bad week, not a bad week, but if it's like a rough week and I have to get this day to day stuff done, it could be twelve hours, depending on.
But it's going to be the flat rate of four thousand a month.
It's going to be that, it's six thousand, four thousand a month for nine months.
Yes, that was the confusion of like, is it flat or is it a hundred and fifty?
I just wanted you to, where I came up with that, like a lot of people say, well, what are we getting, so?
So the hundred and fifty an hour rate is for.
Consultant side.
The consultant side to finish.
For her staff.
Organizing, cleaning up, et cetera, and. That was figured it, how many hours?
Well.
Or is that open ended? What's the amount for that?
Yes, one seventy five actually, based on.
Because I would, right, there's the higher rate, right? Cleanup is typically done by, um, I want to say higher, I don't want to say higher level staff, but staff that's used to cleaning up. Which does a lot of research, so that would be like myself and other, you know, multi year municipal employees. And that would be hourly and that's what it would never exceed. So that's a lot of times we do not to exceed in the final proposal. And it would give you what is here. And, and as we go on, if there are larger hiccups in any items, then we would, we would be going along with you, you know, saying this is where we caused or saw hiccups. Now that's
Well, the cleanup, just to be clear, is more the consultant fee.
Correct.
And the day-to-day is the proposal flat rate?
Yes.
So that basically on here was a total of one thirteen.
That's including both cleanup and day-to-day.
But after last night's meeting, we're at sixty.
Yep.
Total. So how is that going to affect?
So how that affects is you will want
It basically gives us twenty-one thousand to work on cleanup.
It does, but
Or
Close out the year would be the first priority.
Yes. So, so now that there's a number, we have to come to an understanding of where, where we're going to have to work, right? And so we're going to go through the items as a group to say, these are the, the key items. These are the items that have to get done. Then we have to decide what items will also be able for the us to maintain the six to eight hours. Because the six to eight hours again was based off of making sure we were able to get the office to a point where we only have to do this day-to-day stuff and not do the research as fires come up. Which doesn't mean it's not attainable. It's just something we have to look at when we really pinpoint what needs to be done in the office, anticipating any fires that will come up. And within that number, we will, I, I mean, we have a good estimate of how long items take. Sometimes it fluctuates, obviously, but we would start with what is the most important, right? Numbers one through fifty or fifteen, whatever we have. And then from there, we can see how far down the line we can go. Doesn't mean that some things aren't going to cross over, right? So it's, if I'm working on tax title and we find out, oh, well, while we're doing tax title, we really need to look at, you know, sewer, or we need to look at something else, then that's something we'd have to kind of cross over to. But we would have a pretty good gauge of the order of things that can be done. And at least for this year, get it to get these items off the plate and then see where we're at after that.
I think you already answered, basically, we kind of covered, that my next one was FY twenty-five close-up. I think any more questions on?
No.
We kind of have a timeframe.
Yeah, I really, I really am trying. I, I, I can't stress, like, I, I do understand the importance on all of us, so.
The other quick thing I had was window hours as far as this.
So we would be here probably the one day. I don't think, I haven't seen that, that that's been an issue at all. We've been able to now every day, by the time I'm here, we are able to respond to every email, respond to every voicemail and, you know, as people are here and we're here and typically if we're still here, you know.
Well, I, I just know that there, there are times where you're here and you don't have window hours.
True, but, and I, and I don't, I try not to take things because I'm usually working on a project, which is best for you guys, but I'm also, I can't be mean. So I will help.
Shade in the close side. Because I knew it was a priority for the town to get the year wrapped up and it also is more beneficial financially to obtain as much of her services without distractions.
Yeah, I guess more my point was to kind of train the townspeople into these are the window hours. Don't show up two days before, two days after, or so that I, I guess consistency on window hours.
Yes, we'll be consistent on
Twelve to three, so on Tuesdays.
I would like Tuesdays, but I also understand. So one of the things that we kind of talked about is trying maybe coordinate, like, I think the assessors here on Thursdays, I'd love to maybe, you know, I have to do something on my, if, if this goes through, then I have to do something on our company end to just shift the day, which, you know, wouldn't wouldn't happen right away, but we can work towards. But I think Thursdays are a good day. The only other hiccup is payroll. It's kind of nice also, but being here on a Tuesday for payroll as, you know, flattening anything out that needs to be done. And we, we do, Maribel has been very gracious in providing the payroll vouchers because us coming out here on a Friday or a Monday, you know, we, we don't want to charge the town, you know, and, and we have
Oh, with the day-to-day, so I guess that would be my question. Would that fall under the day-to-day? So to flat rate?
Yeah, so to come out is hard. It, that's where it struggles because, you know, for us to have to come out here is, you know, it's still half an hour. Like, we still have to drive a half an hour to come out here. And to come out here just to grab payroll. So we would have to somehow come up with a negotiation on that side of it. To figure out how to get the payroll to us in order to process payroll at the least cost to the town. Without impeding on Maribel's original duties, you know, because that does take enough, it does, trying to coordinate that. So that would be something we have to look at.
So you're inclined to have your window hours the same time that the assessors are here?
Or overlap, not the whole time.
But yeah.
So that if you have to send somebody to the assessor, or they have to send somebody to see you.
Yeah.
You're both here.
Yeah, I think that's fair to the taxpayers because then the taxpayers are only having to come out here one time instead of, again, we're here. So I, I I would like to see that happen. I think the
And I think the focus in the moment.
Yeah.
Whatever their problem.
Right, right.
And I know that the clerk in the assessor's office has spoken on that. He was hoping that, you know, she, I don't know if she will, but even mentioned, maybe I can try to change my date, but you know, she also works in different communities based on her company. So, you know, she would have to see if she could make that work too. So it's definitely something that would be beneficial on both ends.
Yes. And like I said, I really would like to see that, especially for the taxpayer, because it saves them a trip out here, gets them less frustrated and having to come back and forth, so.
Are many people using the online payment?
Yes, so now that's the other piece. Before it was not necessarily not having time to put things up, right? But now we are trying to get it up before the bills are issued. You know, every now and then there are issues with the files getting up, so I can't say it, but our goal is to have the, start the process on the Tuesday before the bills are due. We're here, we're trying to upload the file the Tuesday before the bills, not do, before the bills are issued. So that way people can go online, but they are. You know, I always encourage people to do it and understand why they don't want to, so I don't, I'm not pushy about it. But I would recommend they do. It's cheaper than mailing in. I think it's like fifty cents now to, to do an online, so. I've been working with Unibank. So this is one of the other things, working with Unibank to get one positive pay, because that's a banking. And as well as some other options that Unipay offers such as auto bill, so they get, people get notifications. And bill presentment, which means they can pull their bills up online. So I've been trying to work in between with them to set those things up for the taxpayer. And if we can get those for January, that would be great. That would be my ultimate point to, to get it. So we've been working on those with the bank for the taxpayers.
Going forward, FY twenty-seven, would we conceivably be roughly forty-eight to fifty thousand a year?
Yes, that's
For everyday services?
Yes.
Four thousand a month.
Yes.
Because budget time starts in January.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then what about extras?
We can
Other than what we've talked about already.
Yeah, so, so
Going forward.
Going forward, there FY twenty-seven with no, if removing any of these cleanup items, right? Would be just, would be that, that's, that's all the, it would be. And obviously, as we can do things, we will. But it's taking up all the extras off the table.
So really, as a board, we've got to look at, we're basically, we're twenty-one thousand after the meeting last night. Well, we're thirty-nine just for
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. All right, okay.
We got three thousand extra.
Yeah, I don't know where thirty-nine comes from.
Can I have a, can I ask a question, please? I just wanted to confirm, would there be any travel fee on the day-to-day, like when you have to do banks, or is that included in the day-to-day six?
So we talked to, that great question. So we talked to the auditor, or like auditors, right? But one of your prior auditors about the question, because you guys don't have a local bank. And the bank that you guys have is Unibank, which I recommend it's a municipal bank and that's in Worcester. So, that being said, if we have cash, we have to go to the bank. So we use the scanner, so we tried not to do, but if we accept cash, which by law we have to. So I had asked, do we have to go to the bank for five dollars? I might only have five dollars. So we're basically would reduce the number of days we travel based up of how much income we've, we've taken in. So the answer is no, there won't be any extra travel on the base. Right, it would be the day-to-day services. I would structure my staff to go once or whenever we have to. Obviously, we have to make sure by law we go to those things, but that would be included in
Okay.
In what it is.
So theoretically, where you do other towns, you may go to the bank on one particular day.
Yes.
Do all the deposits for the
Ideally.
Communities to get idea.
Yep, no, that's actually what we're working. I have an, I have a safe in my office. We typically, typically we leave them onsite, right? So we leave them in secured site here. And then that one person would go do the, do everything at the same time in sealed bags that we provide that are pre-numbered per town to make sure that there's tracking of hands, right? You always want to make sure that the tracking of funds are there. So yes.
What do you, this is just kind of an odd question. What do you do with security for that? So that if somebody notices you're going to the bank on such and such a day every week and figure out?
I don't, I don't, you know, we don't typically have a lot of cash. Like, I'll be honest, even with the towns, we have our very small cash communities. So we don't, I mean, if, if we have a hundred dollars, that's a lot. So it's really a small amount that we usually have
Those stop tents at the house.
No, 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 very, very small, very, very small amounts. Because again, we scan checks. We are, our goal is we scan checks in the community, so.
So budget-wise for twenty-seven, give or take, we could be looking at for yearly budget for the treasurer collector office. Is it too early to have that figure in your head or?
In my head, yes. I think, I think our first step would be we need to go through what these other items are, what they're going to be, what we're choosing to do, right? And again, I recommend we, we put all of them in order. Because if we get one item on our to-do list that happens to go really smooth and we're able to go, we would, we're just going to keep going down that list. So we might be able to complete all of them, right, with the twenty-four thousand. That would be ideal. But we're going to set a list and we're just going to keep working towards getting everything off the list until the funds are not available. And then we'll have a point where we, you know, we'll then
Because I know last year, reconciliation was a huge
Yeah.
Issue with the accountant.
Yeah.
With the treasurer. My treasurer's not here anymore, but
The good thing is reconciliation is my favorite thing to do. And I, I, it's, it's, we've seen so many different types of reconciliations across the state, different cash books and things like that. So it's not about that I don't anticipate it being difficult. It's just time consuming. That, that's the biggest piece is making sure things are clear because we need to make sure with the audit, again, we weren't here all year, so we're trying to, you know, see what was being done and, and lies that data, so.
Yeah.
But there again, you, you've been here a while, going into twenty-seven.
Yeah.
It's a little bit easier because you know what you did last year and
Yeah, in, it's the way we do the books. Exactly. And it's the way we do, so we are doing our process. So because it's our process, it's the cash reconciliation is going
Right.
Month to month. And this size town probably by the fifteenth of every month, as long as we have all the bank statements, that's usually the biggest issue.
So that should make the accounting office Yeah, a little happier.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So would it be fair to say after the invoices that we get, I'm assuming we might get an invoice for this upcoming warrant from your consultant firm, reduce that, put in, deduct the thirty-six for the remaining of the month and see where we're left off. Prioritize the list, right? Fiscal year twenty-five being number one to close it and then kind of see what we have and kind of check off from that list for what's remaining.
Yeah, yeah. I think that right now cash is going to be the, we're going to start hitting the ground running today to get the cash reconciled. So that's, we'll break it out. Like you said, well, because this is a weekend, we'll take a monthly divided. And we'll start creating the day-to-day, separating the invoices between the two. And notating when we're doing cash reconciliation. Typically, we'll name it something like FY twenty-five cleanup or FY twenty-five reconciliation. That way the, it's very clear when we do billing, what, what bucket you're going to want to pull it from.
I thought of my question.
You did.
Unibank, do they have a credit card for the town?
So yes, so they have, they have a debit card, debit card or credit card. Credit card is not really through Unibank, but they do offer the, the bank recommends a credit card, kind of. If, if you do either one, we just need to make sure there's a good, clear policy in place. You know, we've used debit cards, which I know can be something that people are not a hundred percent for. And I can respect that, but if we can hash out something before either one's issued, I think that's
What we're looking for is just for the Board of Selectmen's Office, not for all the other departments.
Yep.
But there are things that she needs to do and they'll only take a credit card.
It basically involves the post office.
Pretty much it.
Oh, I get, oh.
Sarah knows.
We just had to send out for poll hearings.
And I have to send twelve more.
And there, but ten dollars a piece.
Yep, so I need to, you know, which again, is fine, but not everyone will be fine with that. You know, to say
It's not fine that an employee has to pay the town.
Right.
The town's business. I've said that a hundred times.
So I think it's about the policy. I think that, you know, again, we're, as a treasurer, I'm willing to take either avenue. Obviously want to include the accountant in on this, on what the, the plan is. And then a good, strong policy in place is what I would recommend. And anytime we have good policies, as long as it's being followed, then we should be
I mean, I, I can't think of anything else to use it for other than postage.
Yeah.
For those types of letters.
And then if, if there was something to come up, obviously with the permission, in the policy, you can say, at the discretion of the chair, right? Because sometimes the board can't get together as a board to make that decision at a meeting, you know? But those are so far in between, especially in such a small town.
You can also put a cap on it.
Yes, oh, definitely.
Doesn't have to be.
Oh, unless, right.
As well as there's, you know, one town we're in, they have like almost an approval, right? A process that if you know, does not have to mean that the dollar amounts approved, but the purchase such as, you know, postage, we know that there's going to be postage, you submit a request to postage, not exact dollar amount, but you get that postage approved. On this day, I have to send polls, is it approved? Yes. Whatever the reason, but you have almost a guideline of what can be done ahead of time in the policy of what it can, then like you said, outside that scope, then have something in place of how you would be able to figure out what to pay.
Okay. Now, is that going to require a line item account under the selectmen's budget?
I shouldn't know, because you're basically, you're paying an expense out of an expense line item. So it wouldn't, you wouldn't need a special
So we'd have to link the card to an expense.
So I think that, if I recall.
Purchase you make.
So
That bill would come out of that line item in the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it doesn't have to be linked to anything because the bank accounts are one account. So except for trust funds and special revenue accounts, all the monies can be in one bank account. So it doesn't matter what that
No, no, I know, I get all.
Okay.
Say she had to do postage for legal letters, forty dollars.
Yeah.
And then she had to go get a doorknob, a crash bar.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be from town hall maintenance. And we would just When those bills go, okay, I got you.
Yeah, yeah. So when the invoice comes in, you know, they can
And most things are always pretty good about invoicing first. It's just postal is
It's expensive, it gets expensive.
Yeah, I was hoping that we can like create an account, but they just won't, which, fine.
I've kind of exhausted my questions.
And I guess I, I'm just, I know this is silly and simple, but the board will have to decide on that negotiating of the payroll scanning. That negotiating of the payroll scanning and or anything that needs to be done through a, I don't wanna say a third party, but someone else from point A to point B.
You have some type of. Maybe a stipend could be, depending on if we can, if you want, I could come up with a list of items, typically it's just this payroll, but the items that would cause us to. Need some assistance to get things over to us on the days we're not here. Again, with with labor laws, you have to do payroll, um, so that could be definitely listed a couple.
Do you see payroll only being the only item, or do you think that there will be a few other things that you would need?
I'm gonna, I'm, if you don't mind, I, I just need some time to think of the list, like I'll go through kind of what we do in other communities. When we have to um, depend on the staff in other communities on what they're doing. Um, and sometimes it's cyclical, so even though payrolls every other week, that comes to the forefront of our brains.
Right.
But throughout the year, are there other types of billings that, you know, just happen to be? You, we might need some assistance, but if we can have a little bit of time to just go, I would like to see what we do in other community and get assistance.
And speaking of that, I guess the o, the only other thing that popped into my head as you were saying that was the insurance, I know that the invoices are paid. Through the treasurer's office, but any like updating on employees, um. You know. All uh, benefits, if they make any changes, if they will add something off, would that be something that you would do, or that somebody else?
Yeah, HR, we, HR is not something that we typically do.
Okay.
Um, and the reason is because we're here one day a week, so if you have HR, people need answers right now. And where we're all over the state, it's really hard to give that quality of a product, right?
Sure.
To do, so I think it's only fair that, you know, we're upfront and honest, that I don't think it's best for the town to have us do that part of our, our job.
If you've noticed with the MMA postings, a lot of the treasurer collectors jobs are removing.
Oh, yeah.
Doories.
Actually trying.
At a separate.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and especially nowadays with all the legal.
Yeah.
Issues that it it's hard, and I agree with us, I definitely should be paying, you know, the bills. Verifying, looking at what people's deductions are versus what's being paid, tying those things out and having control over that, but. People's actual, you know, applications and things is sensitive, I agree with what they're trying to pull out, which is HR, so. That's a good question.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate.
Yeah, we'll recap it and kind of touch back and figure it all out, right?
Yeah, so I'm, and I'm guessing we're gonna wanna meet at some, so right now the cash reconciliation is the only thing we'll be working on, not the older stuff. And then um, we'll sit down again to kind of go over the list of what I recommend versus what you guys, because what also what you guys have heard, seen historically, what. Um, has caused issues here that I'm unaware of, so then I can kind of implement that in my timeframe of what I want.
And just one more question, when, if the board is on board or moves forward, when would the um. Outsource day to day on that end begin instantly, or, I mean, obviously gotta hash out all these little details, right? I I get that, but once that's hopefully put in place.
Yeah, we would have to default, make sure procurement, procurement laws are followed, so we'll have to see where that falls, and then um, iron out. Where you guys stand with that.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, so just kind of a recap or follow up, we will be able to make. Payroll and paychecks through June thirtieth.
Yes.
Thank you, Sarah.
We will make sure everybody gets paid.
That's the big one.
Anything else happens, collect money and make, make sure that people get paid.
At least when it's snowing.
Thank you, guys.
The door open when on your way out, thank you.
I don't know what that wants.
Probably for the item that's on the agenda. I take.
Just getting into it. Highway seasonal hours.
Yeah, so I was gonna make a motion to end the seasonal hours. On effective Monday, October thirteenth, which is a holiday, and go back to the eight hour days.
Any discussion?
I just was here in case there was any discussion, just in case if anything was brought up, I know there was some mention. When we had started this in the springtime about the length of it and everything, so I just wanted to. Be here in case there was any questions about the following year, or we'll address it again in the springtime.
Hold on this. And then we'll just go into the other one, right? I'll share my views, guys can shoot me down or whatever.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Hi.
Hi.
Just from a historical standpoint. The ten hour day thing started thirty years ago. And it was from the third week of June. Start of summer, summer solstice, and day after Labor Day.
Okay.
That was summer hours, um, and over the intervening years, it became a six month. Of summer, and the end of winter, I think is what, March twentieth? And they were starting April first and still plowing snow on summer hours.
Right.
I don't think that's tenable.
No, absolutely.
And as you're aware right now, the sun isn't coming up until seven o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
Which is an hour of darkness, beginning a shift. So from that standpoint. So from that standpoint, I, I personally would like to see it go back to summertime.
Absolutely, I uh, I've been doing some research, I did actually this morning, as I was thinking about it. Um, and looked into other department kind of recommendations, or what other departments for other municipalities do. Most from what I've seen is Memorial Day and Labor Day. That's, I would say eighty percent of them, um, it was just that short time span from May to to September. Um, I did see some that followed the school schedule, was like schools ends, and then when school begins, it's all. You know, that was also a possibility.
That's special, that was basically the historical start of the last day of school.
Right.
Whatever that Monday was, which boils around to the third week of June.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Which is kind of what it, at the time, that's what it worked out to be, I think, the twenty first or something.
No, absolutely, I know.
The day after Labor Day.
I know, in my opinion, um, you know, the way at least this year has worked for me. Contractors being as brutal as they are, putting us towards the end of the year, it really is gonna make a difference. Um, in the timeframe of when they come in and us working. It does benefit us more during the summer, especially when it comes to sweeping and roadside mowing, more hours in a day, less travel time. But I don't like, I wouldn't wanna see it go away, because it is a good beneficiary to the employees to show. Appreciation of how much they put in during the winter, um, shortening it, I know they may not be happy about it, but I understand the. You know, I understand, you know, we're waking up at five thirty in the morning, we're getting in, and then it's, you know, about six forty five, and just starting to get that.
The other side of it too is the longer it is, every one of those Fridays now becomes a four hour call in.
Right.
On overtime.
Right.
Which is an added expense where if you hear the eight hours, and it's just Saturday and Sunday, if there's a thunderstorm or this or that.
Right.
That it becomes, instead of, it's two days instead of three days.
Right.
If weather events that cause a call in.
Absolutely.
Minimum four, you know?
Right, yeah, and and that is been taken into consideration, and I've done my best to, at least over the summer to. You know, not spend overtime money, especially because that microburst had hit us at the beginning of the year, and I couldn't. Claim that under wintertime overtime, so that really did end up taking a good chunk out before the first of July, so. After that, I was doing my best to, you know, coming in when I had to, um, or making an agreement with the guys. And uh, you know, who would be around and who wouldn't be around, but um, I do agree that this should be, you know, taken further and discussed of. You know, a a good set timeframe and be voted on, I mean, I I don't disagree with you, so. You know, I don't want people to think that we're taking advantage of the hours and the town especially, so. Um, you know, we're willing.
I, I think it tends to work in the summer months.
Absolutely.
But the, you know, you're fighting the clock early in the year, and later in the year, like we are now, and. There, I mean, let's face it, nothing gets done at six o'clock in the morning.
Right.
Cause it's blackout, so it's not really tenable.
So I don't, I don't think this is something we gotta vote on every year, I think we should make a policy, as the board make a policy and issue it.
Yeah, and lock it in.
Lock it in, that way you're set, they're set.
Absolutely, yeah, and then if it ever got brought up in question, you know.
I mean, whether it's Memorial Day or the third week of June, that's something we can talk about.
Absolutely, no, I totally agree with you.
Any further forward than that, or any later than after that, I'm, I'm gonna be no.
Yep, absolutely, no, I, I agree. I I do would like to see it written somewhere, at least as a policy or as something, so. Again, we could fall back on it if there was any question with any, you know, if the resident had a question in town, or something had, someone had an issue or whatnot. We could at least fall back on it, instead of it just being a, you know, a one time thing or a vote or whatnot, so.
Yeah, I, in the other side of it, and it is what it is, but. When we've had pavers in town on summer hours, and they, they're gonna work Friday.
Right.
Then, you know, do we, do we have a highway department there with them?
Right.
There, there has been those odd occasions when that has happened, and that's not a good scenario.
No, absolutely, no, I totally.
Somebody's gotta, somebody's gotta be there to supervise.
Yep.
The contractor, so, but now, that's all I got on that.
You put that on for another meeting. For a vote.
Next feed in or future, a little bit longer, not this upcoming Monday, you want it on this Monday?
It's this month.
Or Tuesday, Tuesday rather, sorry.
It, I mean, we have till spring, so if you guys wanna. You know, or early summer, I mean, but we have time, so if you wanna sit on it, think about it, and then have maybe something written up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put together.
I don't know, is that something like, has to be written by like town council, or is it something that just is written as like?
I think we can write a policy.
Yeah.
I think we can do.
Yeah, cause it's gonna be very generic.
Right, alright, that's what I figured, cause there is other ones in other towns that I was looking at, um, you know, they already have a policy stated that. It's kind of like under, and I can forward them to Mary Bell, if she wants to base it off of.
Yeah, and I've already been kind of looking into that, so if you have anything, definitely send it, yeah.
So, so, to ease.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, that's fine.
Usually look at multiple policies and kind of grab a little bit from each and what fits the best, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And let's see what the, what's the date for two meetings from now? I think Monday, the twenty seventh is the next one, so we'll put it possibly for that day.
Okay.
Not into November.
Alright.
Depending how far we are with the policy.
Just let me know if you need any help, questions or whatever, if I come across anything that looks good, then I'll send it to you.
Please.
Very good, thanks, Beth.
Alright, Beth, thank you.
Anytime, thank you, you guys have a.
Yeah.
Have a rest of your day.
Yeah.
Can you please shut the door?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And next up, we have executive session.
Okay.
Executive session, chapter thirty eight, section twenty one dash two. To conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Highway superintendent and police chief to adjourn from executive session and not to return into public session.
I'll second the motion. Is that a motion? Okay.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Actually, I think we're supposed to take.
Roll call?
Roll call, Appelkowski, aye.
Brunel, aye.
Right, aye.
Okay, second. Will be entered this.